This afternoon?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Manager, are we having trouble with the machinery?
I think we're up and running now. Yep. Uh, we have Mr. Bob Geppert, uh, wanted to talk about stormwater piping.
Good afternoon, gentlemen, uh, Bob Geppert, Pelican Preserve, and here speaking on behalf of the Ponds Work Group. Historically, we have had a significant issue in trying to get someone to clean our stormwater piping. We have been allocating anywhere from fifty to a hundred thousand dollars a year for a couple of years now, and, uh, we haven't done any significant cleaning in two years. Last year, we spent, uh, four hundred dollars out of fifty-one thousand. At any rate, the reason I'm bringing it here now is to walk one is to prep you that a contract or a bid has, has been worked on between the District, Tetra Tech, and, uh, and Ponds Work Group, and we have a company called Metier Environmental.
Hello, please.
M-E-T-T.
A-U-R.
A-U-R, thank you very much.
A U E R.
Double T.
Metier.
Metier.
Sounds French.
And it's a husband-wife team, Chris and Chris, that makes it easy, I always know their first names. But anyway, they are doing some work, we got their name from Pelican Preserve because Pelican used them in their new, uh, restaurant area, that Piddle Pats or whatever it's called, Piddles and Fiddles.
Fiddle Shakes or, uh...
Yeah, whatever, puddles and duddles. Flip flops, that's the one. So they used them, and Pelican has some significant issues with drainage in the town center, which are not a CDD area, that's private property for them, and Metier's out and they're going to do the work for them.
That's WCI area.
That is WCI. So I have been working with Joe Smith, giving him information of where his blockages are because we have that information, and what pipes are clogged, and then the one particularly about the town center where the pipe is under the buildings, it's gotta be fixed before it's turned back over to the residents or anybody else. So Joe and I have history and we're cooperating. The bottom line is, he recommended these people, they came out, we gave them our list of clogged pipes, and unfortunately, the last time we did significant work was in the twelve, thirteen calendar years, and, uh, the last three contractors have all walked off and not done anything, let me put it out for competitive bids. So we've got a responsive bidder right now, it's gonna be put before you, I believe, in two weeks' time, I think that Mary or April, is that right, two weeks, we're gonna give them the Metier bid?
Um, we received the contract just today.
Oh, you got it, okay.
It's gonna be a review.
Okay, so, and what I guess we're gonna say is, we've got the money, uh, we're gonna put this thing not to exceed a hundred and fifty thousand, and, uh, so when it comes to you, if there's any questions, I'll be happy to answer them, but we may have somebody can get us back in the business of cleaning our sewers.
Uh, my recollection is, you may not have this money in the budget, but you have plenty of cash.
That is correct. It is, we have money within the line item, and I'll cover this with Stephen, it's like the eration, we have accrued funds from prior years and not spent it, we haven't spent a dime this year, we spent four hundred dollars last year, so I know I got a hundred and one thousand sitting there, and we have money from prior years. So we will not exceed the budget, we'll make sure that we're all well protected for that.
Questions for Bob?
I don't expect us to spend anywhere near a hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Yeah, Bob, could you just clarify, I'm gonna ask you an idiot question, if you don't mind, are we talking about the interconnecting pipes?
Yes.
Between ponds?
Those, as well as twelve-inch, fifteen-inch, eighteen-inch, twenty-four-inch, and thirty-inch pipes that go from streets and through to ponds. All of it.
When were they last done in your community?
Twelve, thirteen. Everything was inspected, some of them have never been cleaned. But we surveyed every pipe in Old Pelican, and we have a priority list that surveyed, we put cameras in it, we had divers whenever big enough, and then every pipe system had a report on it to tell us whether it was perfectly clean, twenty percent blocked, forty percent, fifty, et cetera, and then from that, we started on the eighty percent blockages and worked their way down, or we tried to, that's where we had contractors that claim in and cleaned the clean ones and left the dirty ones. So we fired all them, and we went through a number of people to do this. Well, we finally got a contractor now that understands our needs, he's been on site, we walked him, he has the, the last inspection, which was in the twelve, thirteen calendar year, and he's gonna work off of those.
How do they know how to bid on it if they can't see it properly?
I have no idea. They've got cameras, I mean, that's, that's up to them, I mean...
Do they bid by the foot?
Oh, time and materials, that's how he bid it. So it's, we're not gonna know until he gets in there and does it, what it's gonna be.
That's a variable quote.
Yes.
Depending on what they find?
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
Because we had somebody that bid on volume of material, we loved that one, and they never showed up, and we had another guy come out, and he bid on time and materials, and he raped us, he literally raped us, we, when we got our first bill was seventy-one thousand, and I don't think we got a nickel for that.
So they bid, so they assess their quote based on per foot, do they? Or not, and then a not to exceed ceiling?
I, we have a not to exceed ceiling, but do you remember how he based his bid? I'm not sure, I can't answer that.
It just seems to me they're bidding blind, and I'm trying to understand it, because we, we've made...
Well, they say they know, you know, this is their business, so he says if we say it's twenty percent blocked, and it's only twenty.
Okay.
How he's gonna know that, I don't know, but if he goes in, it's fifty, then clearly we're gonna have to spend a little bit more to get it out. And then all the disposal will be handled on site, we got a permission from WCI in the past to do that, and I've gotta get, uh, the permission again this year, we'll dump it on the, the new roads.
We'll have a meeting.
Yes, so we'll know a lot more for you in two weeks, but when it comes, I didn't want it to be hit gold in case there were any questions.
How many contractors have we had?
Oh, I know we had at least seven that offered bids, uh, three we accepted, two walked away, did nothing, Shenandoah came on site and started to work, and then they were doing things we didn't want done and not doing what we wanted done, and we ended up, not in litigation, but we got into arbitration to, uh, resolve their open expenses, and we negotiated the price down, but those were the people that said we needed to clean twelve, uh, structures, control structures at four hundred dollars per, and their first bill had seventy control structures at four hundred dollars per. So, you know, that kinda went way out of line with us, and...
So we've never really had a capable, competent vendor with integrity ever, it seems, from what you just said?
We've never had one, but we've been satisfied with the results. They may have been capable and competent, but they didn't follow instructions when they came on site.
Like?
Rather than doing the areas we specifically told them, the eighty percent clogged pipes, they just showed up and put their equipment up, literally any place they wanted to and started working.
That was the Shenandoah?
That was Shenandoah.
What, Extreme Divers, their interface with it, how did they have any interaction at all after they did the...
Extreme focused on pipes that were large enough to have a human being go through it.
Right.
I, we never engaged, and we used those through Aquagenics back then, they're the ones that introduced to the, to the community. They never bid of their own volition on the smaller jobs, that's not to say they may not be interested, but when we did the public bids, we didn't get a response from them.
Because they always seemed to have integrity, quality, fair price.
You know, I don't remember all of the stumbling blocks, but I know some companies would only bid if they could both inspect and clean, and we didn't like that, we wanted one guy to inspect and another guy to clean, and then after the cleaning was done, we were gonna go back and inspect and make sure we got what we were paid for. I don't remember why people excluded themselves, but I know that was part of it at the time. I have no idea if that had entered into Extreme's calculation or not.
And last but not least, it seems though that we have really no record of past work within the community by these new people, am I correct?
You are correct in that. We don't know, but other communities do, and WCI has used them extensively, and we all know how cheap they are, so if they're satisfied, we'll find out, I'm in the town center, you and I go up here all the time.
Exactly.
But we'll know pretty quickly whether these guys can do the job.
And no one's communicated with a past client?
I...
To get direct feedback?
Yes, Tetra Tech has said they are aware of these people.
You know them, Dan?
Yes, for the record, Danny Nelson, Tetra Tech, yes. Metier has been around a long time, they, uh, they do a lot of work with government agencies, uh, from site work to, uh, cleaning. In fact, we, we suspect once we go through the pre-qualification process for, uh, the cleaning efforts and the, um, repair work, the lake, even the lake bank work, um, there'll be a pre-qualified vendor, so we've known them for a long time.
So, I, I said last, but I, I have one last, and that's, of the videos that we did before, have we cleaned those areas that were videoed, or are there areas that were videoed that hadn't been cleaned, and if that's the case, aren't we going to provide them those videos?
We told them they were available to them, if they want them, I've got them, the district's got them.
Sure.
But I don't know, they haven't expressed an interest, they just, they see the pipe, they told us what percent it's blocked, and they're willing to, to go on that.
The, the part that still fear is my fear, though we put a cap of a hundred and fifty thousand, I think any of us would like to have that as pizza money. What I mean by that is the fact that we really don't have a real firm contract that's amenable from what I see on both sides, they've got an end that they can escalate up to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and based upon the fact of them saying, "You told me that, but we discovered that."
Our safeguard is this, Gary, they're gonna work week by week, Ponds people will be with them all week when they're working, we'll see what they're gonna put a cone into a pipe, it opens up, and then they drag the debris, debris back to a control structure, and then based on what comes out of that control structure, you'll determine how clogged that particular pipe was.
And then Tony's got some...
And to address that, that's part of when, uh, April sent it to me to review it.
Okay.
And, uh, it was in a PO form, purchase order format, and it had some, I had some concerns about the, I'll call it parameter specificity, and that's part of the idea of having a contract and working on that between now and the next, and next week, and we have to get it in the agenda packet to pin those down, as, as Mr. Geppert indicated.
All right, so we're gonna...
To get the proper parameters and...
Absolutely, it was something we're all comfortable with, and it's black and white.
And, and enough objective criteria for payment.
And the work group will be side by side until our comfort level gets...
All right, so somewhere similar, you're gonna tailor it, so to speak, so the pants really fit, and...
Yeah, it could be another false start, I mean, we've been burned a couple times.
That's okay.
We're hoping not.
Just wanting to be, have this as public record in case...
Absolutely.
...wondering eyes.
Yeah, we're, we're optimistic, we can develop a long-term relationship, but it's TBD.
All right.
Just, uh, to, uh, add to what Gary and Tony have said, uh, your idea is to let the string out slowly, so to speak.
Yes.
Could, if we're gonna translate that into legal terms, wouldn't it be worth establishing maybe a, uh, call it a pilot, but an initial goal with a ceiling, and make sure you got a comfort level before you give them the whole job?
Oh, absolutely.
I mean, two contracts.
It's gonna be incremental steps, but yes.
I think that's the, the way I read the PO, was sort of that, that concept.
A staged contract.
Yeah, we clearly said at the end of one week, they're done, until we say, "Let's go further."
As I, as I envision it, without getting to nitty-gritty, would be notices to proceed or articulate the specific scope of work, and then an evaluation after that scope of work was quote-unquote completed, and the district analyzed and the Ponds Group assistants, whether or not the work was completed, what was completed, and was it satisfactory?
And was the cost in line with what our expectations were.
And then go forward if possible.
There's a dollar cap for that seven-day period, is that correct?
Five-day, but I, I don't know.
No, five-day, whatever.
I don't know, I don't know, we didn't get into that, but it's gonna be a set group of things to do.
Surely, that's in reality the, the primer, if you will.
Yeah, Tyler was in the meeting, and he said we set it at twelve thousand. That's the seven-day cap, not to exceed, within a week, twelve thousand dollars, till we've approved that.
And Danny and Tyler think that that's a good number?
Well, Tyler did. So yes, Danny did.
Hello, for the record, Tyler Wayne, Tetra Tech, basically where that twelve thousand number came from was, they had a, a bill rate per hour, I think it was either three hundred or three thirty, and that was essentially just forty hours.
Okay.
So that was the most that they could possibly do within that week.
And there's no additional setup charges or, you put into site?
No, sir, they explained they would just charge by hour, there was no mobilization or MOT or anything like that.
That's a good part.
Discharge on site, say this in my...
Exactly. Okay. Thank you, Bob. Mr. Manager?
Yes, uh, Mr. Tinkle, and he's got an agenda item and a non-agenda item.
And one more now, after hearing Bob, uh, I wanna hit that one first, uh, sewer cleaning. Uh, we about three or four years ago, working with Morris Riley, uh, did an inventory of all of our storm sewer system and our interconnects, pond interconnects, and determined what quantity of debris and other materials that are in those sewers that need to be cleaned. We then divvied it up and came up with a phasing project that Stony Brook, Silver Lake, and the roads would be a top priority. Specifications were done by Danny's company, and then we took bids, if you recall, and I believe we got one bid, and, uh, as I recall, it was extremely high. We went out, we did some manipulation to something, I guess, and we did it again, and the same thing happened again. My question is, is it sounds like to me that, uh, Pelican Preserve is moving along, where are we here in Gateway on our projects?
Have, if I were in your position, I'd turn to Danny, I'd look to the left and say, "If you could find these people for them, then why can't they find the people for you?"
Well, it's kind of a loaded question. The, the deal is, is my, it's, it's my understanding that perhaps we have gone out and issued a purchase order, and I guess I'm trying to figure out, how do you do that? How do you do that, how, how does bidding come into that? On a selecting of a vendor for a construction contract, it could be hundreds of thousands of dollars, how do you do that?
If I may, Mr. Chairman, for clarification, as I read the statutes, the activities involved in the cleaning of the system and the pipes is a repair and maintenance, not a construction activity.
So we don't have to have any bidding requirement?
We have a statutory threshold, if it exceeds a hundred ninety-five thousand dollars, requires formal competitive bidding, under a hundred ninety-five thousand dollars, it's a less formal process.
Can you phase it, skirt it?
The board always, the board always can direct it to be competitive at any point in time.
I come to almost all the meetings, and I've never heard this discussed.
About...
Did I miss something?
Thresholds or...
No, 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 I know about thresholds, I'm talking about this subject. I wasn't aware that we had retained anybody yet for Gateway to be doing this work.
No, we haven't.
We haven't?
No.
There's no purchase orders?
No. Now, my question becomes a one ninety-five, if somebody wanted a sharp, could they do one ninety, sixty-five, sixty-five, and sixty-five?
That's where I was going.
Under the statute, you're not supposed to split it to avoid the competitive solicitation process.
I just thought I'd ask.
You know, at times, there may be appropriate to, if you have very distinct projects that you can identify legitimately without, uh, being accused of evading or attempting to evade the competitive...
So you could make a second...
It all depends on the nature of the project and the scope of the project.
For clarification and summary, the, um, this dates back to work that Morris Riley had primarily done in Silver Lakes, in, um, Stony Brook, and then also throughout where the roads are gonna be turned over, so, um, a bid package was put together, I believe, twice, and, uh, the second time, uh, we received, uh, one, was it one bid? Um, so since then, recognizing the need to get the work done with the roads, um, the CDD moved forward with working, issuing purchase orders, as I understand, I was not in, involved with that, to Extreme Divers for the larger components, and to, um, Sewer Viewer for lar, smaller components, for what is solely in the roadway, so, um, how much of that has been done, I, I personally do not know, and I do know that none of the work in Stony Brook, none of the work in, um, in Silver Lakes has been performed, so that's still sitting out there as to how we, how we proceed, so that's the extent of my knowledge, but that was primarily coordinated with, with Scott, so unfortunately, I have to do a little research.
Did I hear you're right that we did in fact, did I hear, I thought I...
I wasn't sure.
You're hearing the same thing I'm hearing, like, how does this happen?
Okay.
I don't, I don't know how this happens, I swear, I don't know how this happens. Did somebody give somebody the authority to go out and, uh, basically encumber us and you guys for this stuff, and you guys didn't even get a say-so in it? That's, that's insane.
That, that's in the capital improvement budget, there's a portion there, and there was also, what I understand Danny's saying, this is part of the road turnover project, the, the paving, and it had to be done.
I totally agree, totally agree, but it doesn't skirt, allows you to skirt the rules.
Well, I'm, I'm, I'm not positive, but we believe this was in front of the, the board, the specific items, specifically for the road portion, so, uh, we'd have to go back and look at the minutes, but...
If that was the case, then you know how we came up with this thing where there was supposed to be all the projects, and they were supposed to be listed by date and expiration, et cetera. We should be able to go to the last one, and we should easily be able to find it there, if in fact that's true, with a reference number or whatever. Yeah.
Underlined, should.
Agreed.
That's what I'm, the only thing I can proliferate is what it should be. Now, if we go back, and if we find that it's not there, then we've got another...
Yeah, it's on page three of the, uh, tracking form.
Okay.
Stormwater system cleaning and repairs, six hundred thousand dollars.
Stormwater system cleaning and repairs. How much?
Six hundred thousand dollars.
Six hundred.
I'm not talking about a budget, I'm talking about a contract.
We're talking about a contract.
That is a contract.
And I wanted that number rolled into one ninety-five.
Well, the other, other reason I'm, yeah, one ninety-five, that's one I was concerned about, but more importantly, I heard Bob say something, and I've been in this business forty years, T and M contract on this kind of work, lots of luck, roll the dice, you're playing with fire, you're playing with fire. This is so undefined scope work, it's unbelievable. It may be that you have to go that route, but there's things like you can put in it, like limitations, uh, time and materials, not to exceed, and I think that's what I was hearing you guys say, doing that to where you analyze what you're getting into, because this stuff is working in the dark.
It didn't work.
It just scares me as a citizen, paying these bucks, because I don't think six hundred thousand dollars is gonna touch Gateway, not gonna touch Gateway. But the real concern I've got is, is, I was worried about Gateway Boulevard and Griffin Drive and Commerce Lakes, we've got a contract on a turnover, at least on our segments, I don't know what WCI is doing, if anything, that's coming up, and during the preparation of the white paper and the negotiations with the county and the intermunicipal agreement, it was made clear, we will certify to Lee County, all those sewers are cleaned. So having Billy Bob go out and clean them, that isn't gonna get it, it's gonna be the guy that's gonna put his stamp on that set of drawings that certifies it, and who's inspecting it.
It's frightening, the fact that no one seems to know where we're at.
That's why I asked the question.
Something of this magnitude of six hundred thousand, a mere six hundred thousand dollars.
I, I just heard about it, that's why I'm bringing it up.
No, it's not your fault.
Gary's right, and the fact that we've got six hundred thousand in the budget is one thing, but from what I've heard, Bob, from Bob, um, having done the due diligence that you've done, and you've chosen this firm, Metier, it would seem to me sensible to, to give, to see how they perform in the interim, and in the first case, in Pelican Preserve, and if, if there's a comfort level with them there, perhaps we can, perhaps we're better to wait to see how they perform there, considering what your point is, that it's, your TNMs, it could be, it could be a lot of unknowns, right? Wouldn't it be better to see how Metier operates in Pelican, and then if we like them, we can use them here?
Yeah, I, when I first started about this this week, I contacted George Bowling at Aquagenics to see what, you know, where were you at in on this? He didn't have a clue what I was talking about. I find it amazing that one of the vendors, that's a possibility of doing the work, wasn't contacted.
Didn't we have a dialogue about this?
I'm trying to figure out who's on first.
Truck and all that stuff?
Let me answer this specifically with Aquagenics, because they're the ones we went to the first, and when we realized that all they did was farm it out, and then put a, a bump-up factor, we decided to cut them out of the middleman, that's not really their expertise.
Who did they use?
Aquagenics, I mean, Extreme Divers.
To, to do the cleaning, so I see.
Yes, yes.
So I guess what he's saying is Aquagenics doesn't do this kind of work.
That's not one of their core things, now, they'll always tell you they're gonna bid on everything, but our own experience was, they subbed it out.
Okay, but Extreme Divers, we've had vast experience with them.
Now we have, yes.
My, my whole thing is, right now, I just wanna get this road deal done, and this doesn't come back to bite us, but I come to all the meetings, and I haven't ever heard anybody talking about, I heard the last time that we got a bad bid, or we got a high bid, not a bad bid, we got a high bid, and it just kinda went into limbo land, and now all of a sudden, I've heard that we've entered into some type of a purchase order agreement with a vendor, or maybe multiple vendors, to do this work, and I'm, I'm sitting here trying to figure out, how do we get around some of these rules?
Okay, that's, that's enough on this, I'm gonna ask the manager to look into this as soon as possible and bring the whole board up to snuff.
Thanks, Bill.
Let's go on to the next item.
Uh, next item is, is that the last meeting, and I don't see him here, he was here a while ago, uh, George Huskamp brought up some issues on mainscape relative to their landscaping deals, you weren't here, Gary, uh, but the innuendo was, and I didn't hear a, uh, response back from the board, and it had to do with the issue of mulch and the look here in the community. Well, I've come to find out, him basically saying they're putting down pine straw. Well, the issue is, is that's what your contract calls for, three times a year, so somebody elected in the writing of the specification, when you were doing the procurement with these guys, to go for pine straw, so sit here, and I'm, I'm not a stock owner or anything like that in mainscape, but sitting there and some of the bad-mouthing that was going on, or the inferences of bad-mouthing against their work, that's not right. Uh, the reason they put down pine straws, because that's what we put in the specs, so anyway, clarification for that. And then the last one, you have an item on the agenda that I'd like to delay responding to, because I don't know, at this point in time, enough to ask questions about it, but it's on the contract amendment and the extension of fifty-eight thousand dollars for three items of work and a cost overrun, I'd like to be able to have the opportunity to ask a question on that later on.
Fine.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Manager?
Yes, Phil Measy, and LED installation, safety and security work group.
Two items for you, first, uh, much, much smaller bucks than my colleague, but we'd like to ask for your authorization, I, I just brought this along so everybody gets an idea of what we're talking about. We have forty-seven light poles, now have metal halide lamps in them, we'd like to replace them with LEDs.
Cool.
Thanks.
The savings are significant, and, uh, we'd like your authorization to do that. This is not in our budget, however, we, we believe we've got, we've got enough funding to do this. By the way, Phil Measy, Pelican Reserve PPAC, representing PPAC, as you can see very quickly looking at this summary of where we're, where we are, we'll save about forty-two hundred dollars a year on energy, and prorating the maintenance, we'll save another thirty-one hundred dollars a year on the maintenance, so for total savings of about seventy-three hundred dollars a year. Payback, we're, we're asking for a not-to-exceed thirty-thousand-dollar authorization, um, we think that, we think it'll be about a twenty-seven thousand dollar job, and the payback is about three-point-seven years, we think it just makes a lot of sense to do this, uh, ASAP, so...
How soon can they finish it, Phil?
Um, in a month or so, Gary, I, I think.
Okay.
Yeah, West Coast lighting would do it.
Uh, can you give me just a rough idea of where these lights are located?
Well, yeah, they're, they're located along all of our, our roads for which we have, for which the CDD has responsibility.
Pelican Preserve Boulevard?
Yeah.
And what about the residential areas that, that the CDD has responsible for?
Um, most of those are FPL lights.
Okay, but, so these are strictly on Pelican Preserve Boulevard?
Hmm, not entirely, uh, some of them go into the, there are some of the residential areas.
Do we have to pick up Veneto Drive, for example? Say again? Veneto Drive, do we pick that up or will WCI? I, I don't know, but I think there's several residential areas that...
Yes, that are...
Gateway is responsible for.
That are ours, right.
Um, you're gonna help me out here?
Yeah.
This is not a loaded question. The LED lights that I see on tree line that have been in now for less than a year...
Right.
Are very, very nice on a fifty mile an hour road.
Right.
But they seem to me that they might be overly bright on residential or semi-residential roads, have you taken that into consideration?
I must, I must admit, Bill, that did not come up in the discussion, um, but I will, But I will, we will check that out before, before we go forward, then.
Let me turn to my colleague, who is
Pelican Preserve Boulevard could use some lighting.
Well, I think
I realize the one streetlight you're concerned about. Bill's concerned about one streetlight?
No, that's, that's not so. That is not so. When you drive on, on, on Tree Line, with the new lights that have been put on, those are LED lights? And you can notice an extreme additional lumens from what we have on Pelican Preserve Boulevard. Can you not?
Yes.
Do you have any concern that that might be too much for that area?
Not a bit. I think we need to turn up the rheostat right now. It's dark. It's very dark. And then I could bring up something else that recently happened, but I won't allude to that.
Yes, that, you know, it, it helps to address the, the, that problem, the crime problem.
Are you looking for a resolution this evening?
I am looking for a resolution this evening.
May I have a motion to?
Motion.
I'm sorry, was that you? And with, you're second?
Yep.
Other conversation from board members? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Five-zero, thank you, Bill.
Okay.
Are you not finished?
No, I'm not finished. Second, second item, which I listed with Cal. Uh, I need your, or would like to get your approval of, we have reconstituted our Pelican Preserve Safety and Security Work Group to undertake, we are now, I should say, expanding our look to include both safety, the traffic safety within the community. And with, with the crime spree we had this last weekend, we are going to be looking very carefully at that. Some of those, some of the, the way we will address both of them may intersect. Uh, but we had to completely reconstitute the Safety and Security Work Group. Uh, I believe you have copies of the names of the six individuals who I am recommending. I'm one of the six for that. And I would like your approval of those people. Uh, we've tried to make it as representative as possible, as you requested at one time. So we have representatives of, um, the WCI communities, of Castle Property, of the Alliance, the PP Master Association, and a couple of people who are members at large in the community. So there are, and myself is representing the Advisory Committee.
Number seven?
Six.
Oh, six.
I'm sorry, seven, yes, seven with me, yeah, seven is correct.
Uh, motion for approval?
I, I don't have a listing of the names.
I'm sorry, I thought, I, I had sent a listing to
Was that last meeting?
To Diane, and asked that it be distributed to you.
I didn't see the names.
You didn't?
Well, you didn't in the feedback meeting, Diane, and the names, I mean.
I know, and I had, I had asked her to distribute a copy of that list. I apologize.
Passed it out at the last meeting.
Uh, I had asked that it be passed out for this meeting. I'm sorry, I apologize, and I did not make copies of mine.
Does it really matter whether we know the names? Because I wouldn't know the people. If you, if it's good enough for you, it's good enough for me.
I can name the, I can, I can name the people.
Margaret's right to ask, of course.
Uh, yes, absolutely.
I think that it'd be nice if they were at least read into the record.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
She has electronically a copy of the sunet, which is gonna make the thirty thousand.
We'll have it in just a minute, right?
Right.
Okay.
Okay, she, she did send it, yeah, I, I assume she did, because I requested that she send it to you electronically.
While we're waiting for that approval, which no doubt will be made, can you tell us when this group will have their first meeting?
Already had the first meeting. I took the liberty of meeting with them, and we have a second one coming up very shortly. So we already have, under considerations, some of the things that we just started. And I'm, we're now getting to the point where we're gonna start coming up with recommendations for you.
Oh, are you gonna give us, are you, are you gonna give us all the recommendations at once?
Oh, no, no, I, I suspect they will come out a little bit at a time, but we, we need to go through, we need to go through the P- We need to go through the PPAC. But we will be coming up with recommendations, I hope, for the PPAC at its upcoming meeting, at least some recommendations. And, um
Thank you.
In, in the security area, I had a meeting this morning with our, um, Castle Management, and also with our, uh, new supervisor for Securitas. We just turned over there, and we've already got some things underway in that regard. So we're starting to move on this thing.
May I have the motion for approval?
I'll make the motion to approve. I'll second.
Any other questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Five-zero, Mr. Manager. Phil?
Yep.
Do you have more?
No, thank you.
Thanks for coming.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Manager?
Uh, that's all we have, sir.
Oh, terrific. The Chair's been asked to make a slight adjustment in the agenda. And unless we have objections, we're going to go to the employee compensation considerations next, which is labeled item five C on our agenda.
Uh, you've got a memo that, that I, was in your packet, and basically identifies two issues that has been addressed here. One is the fact that there's not a standby compensation for the employees that are asked or
Could you put that up on the screen?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes. Uh, let me see.
Thank you.
Uh, one is that there's not compensation for employees that are asked to be on standby during non-work hours. And the other is a, the approval of implementing a cost of living increase for the employees this year. Uh, the two percent is included in the budget, and that's what we're recommending, a two percent, with a couple adjustments which were identified. Uh, they're basically lower-paid employees. Uh, the two full-timers have been with you for, for a while, one for quite a while. And, and it's a slight adjustment for both of them. But the, you've got a copy of a memo attached to that memo from your attorney, Mr. Pierce, that identifies what's being done in several other communities, in organizations regarding the on-call compensation. And, and I had mentioned what Severn Trent does with their people, which is twenty dollars a day. Uh, when they're on call, they're on call for a week, so they get a hundred and forty dollars. And that seems like it's a step in the right direction, and we're recommending that two actions take place. One is the authorization, or, I'm sorry, three actions. One is the authorization for the two percent pay increase for cost of living. Two is the adjustments for five employees, three part-time attendants, full attendants, and then the two full-time people. And then the third is the implementation of a on-call compensation for the employees.
Can we start one at a time?
Yeah.
You want, you wanna vote on one at a time, or you want to?
I wanna discuss one at a time.
Me too.
All right. I would like to just start by getting on the record that the on-call addition is, you know, in conjunction with the Fair Labor Standards Act of the federal government. Uh, having said that, Mr. Newbauer, you started the compensation, would you please?
I just wanna pick, anybody can pick one topic.
Will you pick yours, please?
Yeah. Um, let's start about the two percent.
Okay.
Let's just open it up to the board. When was the last time that we gave the two percent increase? What was the date?
Uh, about this time last year.
It was a year ago?
Yes.
Seems shorter, how the time flies. And is this across the board, just so that I'm totally clear and let the audience is clear, for every staff member?
Yes.
Regardless of how long they've been with the company?
Correct.
I don't like that at all.
Okay. Would you like to insert a, an amendment that the staff member has to have been with the company for at least one year?
That, very definitely so, and also has to be in good status. Meaning that they're not in a situation of notified of problems of the quality of their work, et cetera.
They haven't been put on notice of
That is correct, sir. Yes, I think that that's typical.
Anything else on, on that item?
Um, and I just, it seems like putting a two percent, two percent, two percent, two percent is something that I find that it defies the fact of, of quality or merit. It's just hang in here long enough, and we're gonna get two percent, two percent. And if you do twenty, you've got a forty percent increase just by doing the same thing. I'd rather see merit raises or merit awards as compared to just and I think we could interlock those fingers with one of the reports that we received just a few days ago regarding the status of certain assets of the district. So I'd just like everybody to consider that.
Dan?
Rod Senior.
I'm sorry.
Rod Senior.
Oh, Rod, oh, Pete, the friend of you, Rod.
Okay. Uh, thanks, Gary, for your input. Um, I'm not too far from you on this. I think certainly it shouldn't apply to people who have not been under our employ for twelve months. Um, I think considering COLA is one-point-six, and food increase, food increase has not necessarily followed one-point-six. My, my understanding is food, food prices have gone up more than one-point-six. I, I totally agree that we, and there are three people cited here for merit increases, Anthony, Natalie, and Nancy, to answer part of Gary's issue. But generally, in agreeing this two percent, which I'm inclined to do with a proviso, that, and we've, we're, we are trying our best, and we've yet a long way to go, on, on our whole organization chart. We had a workshop recently. I do feel we need, we need more of those going forward. We need to understand how we're com, who's accountable for what jobs, and how are we rewarding people? And I agree that we shouldn't just keep compounding these annual increases purely because people have paid, uh, have paid service to this district. I think, I think merit has to come in. So my point here is that in agreeing a two percent for people who have been here for over a year, I'd like it, but we ought to discipline ourselves going forward that when we, when we're sitting here doing this again, we're, we're not gonna fall into the same situation. That we have to start consciously trying to introduce some account, introduce some accountability and merit increases, rather than just relying on COLA.
Thank you.
And, um, I, I don't have any problem with the, the COLA being, um, applied to people that have been employed for twelve months or longer, unless Tony gives us some reason why that can't not be done.
I can't think of any reason.
Okay. And I don't, I don't believe that the two percent increase is, is out of line. I think that, um, I don't know about everybody else's budget over the last twelve months, but mine's certainly increased. The, um, the, I agree with the merit pay here, and I think that's part of what these requests are for specific individuals. Was everyone evaluated? Has every, all the employees been evaluated, or, or will we be seeing more of these for merit increases?
The, the evaluate, and this is one of the points that I raised last year when I submitted my recommendations on how to go forward. I, I agree wholeheartedly with Mr. Newbauer and Mr. Senior that somehow we need to implement a review process granting merit, rewarding merit and, and good, uh, performance. The, um, the program that's in place doesn't adhere to a solid evaluation of performance. And, um, uh, it's something that needs to be developed.
So are you telling me that these are the only employees that have been evaluated so far?
No, all of the employees were evaluated, but the criteria for measuring performance was insufficient. And, and I don't believe that it effectively measured, it, it didn't effectively measure the, an employee's performance or ability to meet the objectives of the job.
The instrument was ineffective, as you say? Margaret, may I go to Pam?
Yes. Thank you.
Pam, do you have a summary?
Can you tell me what you have in place to start to be able to measure the performance of these employees?
The, first, we have to develop that instrument. And, um, several models have been reviewed, but we're still in the process of presenting that. We've got a lot of talent that you've recently brought on to staff. Cindy Klein has experience as a HR director. April has a lot of experience in personnel management, and we want to put together a evaluation tool to where we can capture those objectives. First, you've gotta be able to identify them for the employee, so that they clearly understand what, what's expected of them. Then you have to identify what are the, the, the standards they'll be measured against? What, what exactly is your job performance expected? Now, we've just completed the analysis of the time that they've spent on the job. Were their times being invested? And I think that we can come up with criteria better now than what we could before we had that.
Can you give the board a timeframe on the instrument?
Uh, probably two months. It doesn't take that long to prepare something. It's, you know, that's what we proposed a year ago. And, you know, we got delayed. And if we're back on track to complete that, then we can knock it off relatively quick.
Well, I am in agreeance with the two percent increase and the merit increases. I think that these guys deserve that.
Margaret?
Yeah, I, I just, I ha, the only concern that I have here is, um, and I don't have any problem with accepting the raises that you wanna give, but I don't have any comparison to other employees and their functions as far as why to me, it seems as though you're giving these pay raises because you feel like the, they're, they're not being paid what their position is worth, to me, more than, like a merit. And, uh, my only concern is that I don't have a comparison with the other employees.
Thanks, I just wanna say one last thing, please, Mr. Chairman. The, the way I understand it, Cal, you're recommending this two percent because we're trying to keep the employees up with the cost of living?
Yes.
That's the, and we're budgeted for that?
Yes.
Okay? Uh, you've, you've given, I, I named three people, there are actually five.
Right.
Okay, the three I named were part-time, then we have Pete, and we have Julie on full-time, but you're recommending an exceptional increase for, on merit, correct?
Yes.
And on that basis, that's, and, and I'm glad that Pam asked the question of a, a timeframe within which we can sit down and discuss how we're gonna start. And, and yes, we have some people on board now that we didn't have a month or two ago, in the name of April and Cindy, who might be able to assist in, in moving us to this, to a better way to manage our staff and compensate our staff based on merit.
Yes.
And I value those comments. I think that's a good move forward, so I would support it on that basis. The two percent, I mean.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, the, the Chair will entertain a motion to approve the two percent cost of living adjustment plus the few merits for those folks who have been in our employ for one year or more. May I have a motion?
I'll make the motion to approve. No second.
Motion is taken, is there any further conversation on that? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Five-zero. Uh, we have left, I'm sorry.
We still have to
Mr. Newbauer, was that a affirmative, yes?
I'll go along.
Okay.
We have yet to approve, to discuss and approve the item under the Fair Stabors, the Fair Labor Standards Act for on-call pay. Before I entertain a motion, is there conversation on that? May I have a motion to approve? I'm sorry.
Thank you. I've got two questions on this. FLIS?
Yes, sir.
Okay, how long has this been in place, roughly?
Number of years.
Why has this now become an issue?
I think it was raised by Cal, was why I raised the question.
What's triggered it, Cal?
Uh, what triggered it, an employee brought it to my attention that it wasn't, and part of it was and part of it was, uh, when the employees had the availability of the trucks when they were on call to take them home, then that started raising the question. They don't have the trucks now to respond to emergencies from their house. Uh, so that raised the question initially and, uh, and, you know, I guess it just hadn't been identified before.
I just wondered why suddenly we're looking at this and we've, we've operated for all these years without it. I wanted, so you-
It's one of those things that was under the radar.
Understood. So, you can't, so if I understand it right, it's because employees used to take vehicles home, but now they don't. Is that it?
That might be what prompted the recognition of it, but it's not because, I mean, you need to compensate them and not just give them a vehicle.
Okay. And I understand your point that you made in the meeting book, that people are on call. They can't have a drink, for example. So there is a, and I understand the on-call stuff. And I've, I've looked in detail at Lee Countess' policy on this, further to getting this meeting book. And I, I get that. Um, the other question then is, if you're recommending that we use the Seven Trent formula of twenty bucks a day or a hundred and forty dollars a week, that's, that applies to one person, but how many people are going to benefit from this? Who's controlling how many people are being rewarded at a hundred and fifty, forty dollars a week?
Well, there's only one on-call at a time.
That's, I just need to understand that.
Right. Yes.
Is that in check? In, in other words, could two people then say they're on call?
No.
Correct.
Okay. I, I, there's only one that is on-call, um, that-
Is that how Seven Trent operates? You have designated people or they're on shift, on rotation?
Correct. Yes.
So it's like Fred this week and it's Jack next week?
Yes, correct.
Okay. That's my only comment, Bill.
Okay. Thank you, Gary.
For better clarification, so they get X amount of dollars for being on-call. Do we have it specified in our work criteria manual that all of the different things that they have to adhere to to be quote unquote qualified, like Rock brought up about the thing? Do we have it anywhere that they can't have X number of pops within X-
There, there is a description. I'm not sure how. Tony, have you got it there available?
The manual, I don't. I just have your email that articulates it. It's in agenda packet.
I don't remember or seeing it, but I could have missed it.
But there's not, there's not compensation in it. It says what's expected of them, uh, under the personnel rules. Let me, I can grab that.
And the only people that are really on-call should be the people that are involved with our services, i.e. water, sewer, irrigation, correct?
Correct. Those are the only ones that are on-call.
So if we get something in writing, uh, specifying who would be on-call and that would be one person?
So is the twenty, twenty-some dollars compensation for non-alcohol or is it compensation for the fact that, what?
From our, our research, it's the amount of constraints that are imposed on the individual that would qualify them to be basically, you know, on, need to be compensated for being on-call.
But we don't know what the constraints are.
Uh, well, my understanding of the constraints are fifteen-minute response, no alcohol, and that was sufficient based upon our research.
Do we have that in writing and do we have a signature from all those people that would be getting that and that are adhering to that?
I think, I think we may want to do is, if it's not in the manual now, is when the designation comes out about the people being on-call, these are the criteria for what you're on-call.
Right. We're gonna, we will be, uh, amending the employee handbook, I suspect. Don't you? We worked so hard on that a couple of years ago, but it looks like we need an amendment.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to just, one other, one other thing is, then, when does it constitute time and a half or double time?
No, it does not. That's not.
I'm sorry. I was just asking the question. You don't need to be double-timed.
Yeah, what our research indicates is that once they are called to duty, if they're on-call, they get called, they get paid for, it's called, like Kellen and I were talking, portal to portal, the time they leave, to the time they arrive, to the time they complete the tasks until they're no longer performing that work.
So they get time and a half for portal to portal?
Yes.
Plus the hundred and forty dollars a week?
Yes.
Right. That's the way I understood it, too.
Yes.
So how can we, if, if we're going to agree this, then the employee has got to understand that he can't be more than fifteen minutes away. He can't go out to dinner an hour away, and that's a constraint.
Well, that is a constraint, and usually that's in writing, and that's what you, you understand that as an employee.
I don't understand this hundred and forty thing. A person is only going to be one person, one day, seven days. So if there's three different people that fall into utilities, then at most, unless somebody really wants that to be on-call, and doesn't want to imbibe, but-
Our total liability is a hundred and forty dollars a week, and it's up to the district, how to divvy it up.
No, no, per person.
There's only one person at a time.
Right.
Right.
There's only one person at a time.
And I think that's the clarity that's needed for the board to understand.
We're in it for one hundred and forty a week, and it's up to the district to decide who gets it.
Correct. One forty to be four twenty.
That's my point.
Times four.
Yeah, no, it isn't. It's one person on-call-
Right.
-per day, and it's, uh, twenty-eight dollars a day. If it's a full week, then it's a hundred and forty dollars a week. If you've got three people that are on-call that week, the one that's on three days gets, uh, sixty dollars and-
One forty gets divvied up between however many people are on-call.
Exactly.
Well, I, I think there may be the qualification, though, that in case of emergencies or extraordinary events, there may need to be more personnel on-call. And that becomes an operational issue.
Well, then there has to be a decision as to who has to rank and file to call in addition. In other words, Gary feels that he needs a second part.
What, uh, what you can do is just, yeah, approve this, uh, pending legal review, and we'll put together wording that will be presented at the next board meeting.
We have that in our emergency plan, Gary. If there's necessary, if we have a disaster and more people are needed, the emergency plan that's already in effect calls.
So, if, if an emergency is, are our staff expected to be within fifteen minutes of and, and imbibing?
No.
Thank you very much. So, this needs to be-
But that's different than having someone designated for call. When you're on-call, Gary, and you, and you can't be but fifteen minutes away, then you have to, you have to be able to answer to April or whoever within a given time. Or you have violated your duty of being on-call. If you show up with alcohol on your breath, you have violated your duty of being on-call.
Pam, when I used to get in the left seat, I knew all that stuff. Somehow I, I lived that for an awful lot of years. So, that part I don't need to be educated on. What I'm saying is, we need to have something that is in writing that is clearly understood and signed off by those people that are going to do it.
We're gonna get that. We'll have that in the handbook.
Right. And it, it'll become part of your personnel policy, but-
And I also would like to make sure we're not agreeing to something that could be, get out of control where two or three employees are getting the benefit of this concurrently.
Oh, absolutely. Right.
So is there any reason why that this can't be written and shown to us the next meeting and we go, hey, this is good. We'll, we'll buy into it. Why can't this wait two weeks?
We, we could do that. Uh, I'd, I'd like to get a motion to get this behind us tonight, if possible. It isn't that big a deal for us.
So then let's wait two weeks and do it right?
We'll have some more good coverage.
Rather than throwing stuff at the wall.
You could postpone your implementation date until you have that. You can approve it now and postpone your implementation date until you have those, those, uh, formal documents in place.
Although I believe that if we do have an on-call situation between now and then, we do need to compensate the individuals regardless of whether it's-
But we never have done before.
I understand, but now that it's brought our attention, I think we never have done it.
That's, that's one reason why I think we ought to do it tonight, to get it behind us, because we're going to be doing it anyway, whether we approve it tonight or not.
And it's required by law.
And the motion can, can, uh, identify that. Your motion can be to approve the on-call policy as suggested by the manager, uh, and the, uh, it will include that they have to be within fifteen minutes of being able to-
No alcohol. No other criteria that are outlined in the-
Carry the cell phone.
One, one person.
Have one person on-call at a time.
One person on-call at a time, per day.
A day, per day.
Quickly, can you-
I'll make that motion. I'll second.
We have a motion. I'm second. Any further?
Being next agenda.
On the understanding that it's going to be put in writing to them to a, to a-
Put it in writing and it'll be adopted at the next meeting.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Gary, I didn't see a signal.
I gotta think that Seven Trent has got that in one of their manuals, in one of the places someplace else.
You're right. Please vote yes for us and we go ahead.
Whatever.
That was, that was, that was a yes? Five zero, Mr. Manager.
It was a semi yes.
Mr. Manager, have we taken care of this issue?
Well, yes, we have.
Did you have something, April? Okay. Okay. Ladies and gentlemen of the board, we are, thank you for helping us on that. We're on item three A, Task Authorization Amendment Returnover, and I believe, uh, Mr. Nelson is going to help us on that.
I'll help with the easy part, and if you have any tough questions, I'll defer.
Look to Tinkle. This, this is, this is your option.
Yeah, this is the item that Mr. Tinkle asked to reserve to ask questions. Uh, this is essentially a, um, extension of service, uh, service for, uh, KCCS. Um, and Paul is here today. Basically, uh, when their original scope of services, um, contract was developed, it was for a set, certain construction period. So they based man-hours on a certain construction period. It was an accelerated schedule, trying to get the work done for road, road turnover. Um, as we worked through design and as it got ready to put out to bid, that construction period changed from what was in their original scope. And their original scope was based on specific number of hours, um, to have observation during, in the field during construction as well as, um, as office time, processing pay requests, change orders, things like that. So it was very specific to a time period.
Is there any on-call?
Prior to, um, prior to bid, as I said, that contract extended, but, um, their contract was not amended. Um, since that time, work has also been added to, uh, to the contractor's scope of work, which is increase the time even more. So, um, to date, and, and as I think you have in front of you, um, their contract has already exceeded, and it's, uh, projected to be exceeded due to the, uh, the current, um, end date, which is, I think, in, in April. So this is essentially, uh, giving them the time to fulfill their duties for this, for this work.
Uh, and thank you. And may I, may I ask if you are recommending approval on this item?
Yes, sir, I am.
And is most of this additional work delaying of the piping, uh, from this building down to Gateway Boulevard on Griffin?
It's a combination of multiple items. Um, the pipeline is a part of this. The sidewalk is a part of this. Neither one of those were part of the scope. Uh, there's also the additional work on Gateway Boulevard associated with the lighting and landscaping improvements we're doing there. So it's a combination of, of multiple items.
Thank you. Margaret?
Yeah, if, and it seems like a, a, a large amount of money. I would have thought that most of the scope of the work, you're, I realize the timeframe has increased, that we were supposed to be at a certain point of ti- of construction at this point that we are not at. But it seems like a large amount of money because some of the work had, could not have already been done because the construction hasn't taken place. So-
The bulk of the time, and, and Paul can certainly correct me if I'm wrong, but the bulk of the time is associated with that individual who is on-site being your eyes and, and ears. Um, so as that construction time period is, is, has changed, you want that individual in the field covering the service. That's essentially what the bulk of that time is for. The rest of it is more or less Paul's time and some of his staff's in the office. So if you look at the actual hours, that, the bulk of that time and cost is with that field personnel.
And I guess my question is that if we expected to do a certain amount of work in a certain amount of time, and that hasn't taken place, we're extending the time, but the amount of work would just be extended in time, not in money?
Well, the, the amount of work did, did increase as well. So that was a big part of it. Um, so, and I think originally, um, I'm not sure what the thought process was. You know, there are a lot of ways you can accelerate a schedule. You can, you can require multiple crews to do work simultaneously. That, that condenses a schedule down. Uh, as, as, as they went through the design process, they recognized the need for, to truly do the work, that, that timeframe had to extend. So just to even complete that work, it had to extend. In addition to that, the actual scope of work increased, um, quite a bit. So it added the, the additional days on to the, to the contract.
Okay. I'll add, I'll move on to the next question.
Yeah, thank you. This is a, I've, I've got some concerns over this. Um, the first, let me just back up to Tetra Tech's arrangement with the district. But you're on here, you came in on, uh, two thousand and twelve on a three-year contract, um, at ninety thousand a year. That's okay. And then in two thousand and fourteen, there was a supplementary legal agreement drawn up for ninety-nine thousand dollars that dealt with this road turnover. Is that correct up to there?
Yes, sir.
Ninety-nine thousand dollars. I've read, I've read that supplement. Um, and now we are faced with a change order for fifty-eight thousand dollars.
Yes, sir.
Because, and this, and this is a pass-through from Tetra Tech. There's no markup on your part. It's because KCCI are stating that they have or will incur fifty-eight thousand dollars worth of CEI work.
I'm standing here defending and I carry the liability with no profit. Correct?
Well, it doesn't, I'm talking legally. Whether you make a profit or not doesn't change the contractual situation. So now, now, the way I read this is that KCCI is saying that it has or will be involved in the inspection of these three projects. That's the irrigation main, the Griffin Drive sidewalk, and the top end of Gateway Boulevard.
Yes, sir.
This is where this fifty-eight thousand is. So I've got, I've got three key questions. Uh, number one, who approved the change order? Well, did that come from Scott or Cal?
No, this is, this is, this is what we're asking for.
It isn't approved yet.
This hasn't been approved.
No, but has some of this fifty-eight thousand dollars already been incurred?
There is time that has been incurred and, and we have not allowed for the, the billing to take place because the work was, has not been authorized. However, the, the train, you know, left the station and the work was continuing in the field. This, this should have been addressed, uh, months ago, yes.
Uh, that's where I'm getting at. Well, I'm trying to milestone this thing in my mind, saying, okay, we're, we're now looking at a fifty-eight thousand dollar bill. How did this, how did we get here? So, we've got a situation where, um, um, the scope of services under the, uh, under this agreement doesn't include these three projects.
Correct.
Under the supplementary agreement of two thousand and fourteen doesn't include these three projects.
Correct.
At what point did these three projects get included in the scope of services? And who, who authorized that?
The work on the construction side would have been in, um, late fourteen, fifteen, somewhere in that timeframe. Um, and, and of course, that work was on the construction side. That was authorized, um, by the board. That was never addressed, um, on, on KCCS's. So at that time, what, what we should have done as a, as, as Gateway, we should have requested for a KCCS to provide us the scope and, and fee for that, and we did not, we did not do that. Yet, the work was still continuing on in the field. It was a change order. So their, you know, field personnel was still responsible for overseeing the, the work.
Okay. The next question is that we had Ivan Vellas on board as our, as our admin engineer, and I know that him and Terry were the two key people who inspected and supervised the contractor on the Griffin Drive irrigation line.
Yes, and, and I will say is-
So my question is, if they're, if Ivan's doing that, and I've got an email from Ivan confirming that, because I've, I've emailed him in Puerto Rico, that he, he and Terry did that supervision. So why are we paying KCCI to do the same thing?
Well, the, the inspection portion, and that was, that was probably poorly worded as, as how we worded in, in the scope. The work that was associated with the irrigation line was, was primarily on the, um, pay request, um, the change order processing, more or less the, the paperwork and the project management side. Uh, their inspector did periodically overview the work, but they did not focus their inspection on that. So that was probably mis, misrepresented as the way I, I worded that. That part of it was added to their contract or needs to be added to their contract, but it was more or less for the soft costs.
It says on page eleven, Danny, on the bottom left-hand table, that there's three hundred and forty-six hours of, um, CEI, construction, engineering, and inspection, right, time. Three hundred and forty-six hours, which is half, half a month for four months. Is that how I'm reading that right?
Yes, sir.
This is how you're building up this fee of three hundred and forty-six hours extra at fifty dollars an hour. That's on, next to the bottom table. Adds up to seventeen thousand bucks, which is the biggest portion of that twenty-three.
Yes, sir.
And then, so I, three hundred and forty-six hours seems an awful lot to me, and I just- And then, so three hundred and forty-six hours seems an awful lot to me, and I just, I would welcome some comments on that number. But then there's a thirty-five thousand dollar number got thrown in for overrun, and what is that?
That was for work that had been performed to the point where they reached their contract amount, and they continued to work, and the work was going on in the field, so they needed to work. But we would, we could not allow the billing because it was over the contract amount. So that's the overrun from when their original contract ran out, if you will, to now. That's where we dropped the ball and should have asked KCCS for a scope and fee earlier.
Yeah, I think there was a ball dropped. So looking at these hours, looking at this three hundred and forty-six hours, how much of that has been incurred by KCCS, and how much is yet to be incurred in terms of the north end of Gateway Boulevard?
Do you know, Paul, if any of that has been?
Well, it has now, because that was based on starting from January first going forward.
Right.
So that's.
That's what I want to know. How far are we into this three hundred and forty-six hours already incurred as opposed to what's yet to be incurred?
Well, if we're looking at January to April, we're thirty, thirty-five percent into that.
About a third in. And so the last question then is, have, has KCCS actually performed this work on that first third? Because Ivan Vellas and Terry Handlin are saying they've performed it.
Of the, your answer?
I just want to know where the overlap is.
As far as the work, for the record, Paul Wingard, performed the work as far as the inspection on the water irrigation line. We did not inspect the water irrigation line, zero. We didn't do that. We did handle some issues with restoration after the fact. In fact, I just had a meeting with the contractor two weeks ago to deal with some settlement issues. We handled all the paperwork, processed the three change orders, the pay requests, the drawing stuff that had to be handled, that sort of thing. So we didn't inspect the installation of the pipe.
So it's the way it's worded in the meeting book that threw me, because it looks to me like KCCS is performing the inspection. So. It says inspection and oversight of the irrigation main along Griffin Drive.
The oversight and the administrative part, portion of the contract. For example, what Ivan did was he verified the quantities of pipe that was installed. He provided that information to us, and we put it in the pay request with the contractor and turned it over, signed off on it, and turned it over to the service district for payment.
I'm going to just speak to both of you on this. If we could turn the clock back on this, how could it have been done better? Where did we drop the ball? What should the process have been?
Well, the first, the first part would have been when we were ready to go out to construction. If that construction period was a greater period of time than what we had in the original contract, we should have addressed their contract at that time first. It still would have required us to come back for a change order, but as soon as we knew that we would be extending it further from additional services. So we had the two things. We had the one where with the original scope of work, the duration of construction was bid longer than what was originally planned in the original scope. So there was one. And then the second was when the additional work was added, prior to issuing the change order to the contractor, we should have gone through the same process with KCCS to properly plan this out.
Should every change order be approved by this board, or is there a dollar limit?
Oh, that absolutely should have gone.
Every change order regardless of whether it's ten dollars or ten thousand dollars or a hundred thousand.
Well, in this case, definitely, I don't, you know, that's a policy issue. But in the case of what we're talking about, these would have definitely come before the board.
So what we've, this process fell down here where there was this change order for fifty-eight thousand dollars should have been approved by the board, is that what we're seeing?
Absolutely.
And it just wasn't?
Absolutely.
Thanks.
Gary?
My question is, correct me if I'm wrong. The vision should have actually included four people. And that doesn't mean to me to demean Terry, but I think it should have been Danny, it should have been Paul, it should have been Scott, and Ivan. And so I think you're all kind of involved in it, Terry being more staff than manager, if you understand what I'm saying. Paul's giving me this look like I don't understand. You do understand.
No, I'm not, no, I'm not really sure where you're going.
Well, what I'm saying is, there's enough communication that goes on that this kind of thing shouldn't have been. Now, do we understand what I'm saying?
I agree totally.
It seems to me that we've come to this crossroad, and I don't think there's any way to put it in reverse. On the other hand, I think that the next time we take off from the stop sign, that I think that we all understand that the communication's got to be better. Go ahead.
Tony, I want to ask you this, please. In a situation, and I've been on the board twelve months, and we've had a number of change orders come to us for various projects. And I'm assuming that every change order has to be board-approved for whatever project we're talking about. Are we, what situation are we in as a board when a change order comes to us and it's like this, and we're asked to approve fifty-eight thousand dollars, and the board hasn't approved the change order? Are we expected to just rubber-stamp every change order that comes to us?
Well, I think the board can engage in the critical thought processes and critical question, and the good questioning inquiries is appropriate because it helps to understand whether or not they will affirm, ratify, approve this one, as well as on a go-forward basis, what can be improved. There's some case law out there that states that, you know, all change orders have to be in writing when you're dealing with a governmental body, when you're dealing with a contract. And there's also another series of cases out there that talk about the services have been performed and the benefit received. It's a concept called quantum merit, which you get, you've already received the value of the services, so you may be entitled to payment. But it's not always applicable in the government setting, because we have unique rules in the government setting. And there's some cases out there saying that in such a situation, the entity may not be obligated to pay. But I think that, you know, and again, it's ultimately a board decision from a relationship matter, from a transactional matter, and go forward, and let's not do this again, because the red flag is definitely up.
It is.
The next time, it may not be so kind and generous.
I want to be fair, I want to be fair to Paul's firm, obviously. If they've done the work, or in good faith, they're going to do the work. But on the other hand, I'm here to protect the residents' money. And I've got, I'm concerned that there's a fifty-eight thousand dollar motion going to be made, and we haven't ever approved this change.
Yeah, and one other way to possibly look at it is that this work had to be performed in some respects regardless. And whether or not it was approved four months ago or approved now, the scope of work, that type of work had to be performed. But it is, it can be concerning to the board that it didn't come to them before the work was performed. I think that, and I think that's the lesson that everybody's learned, that to do better and smarter the next time.
Thanks.
Yeah, I don't think that there's ever been any kind of veil between the communication between all of us, ever, really. And so that's the, to me, that's the disappointing part.
Are you finished?
I am.
Are you finished?
I have one question, Paul. As I look at the chart on our page eleven, it, clear at the bottom. Want to go sideways? Okay.
Yep, I got it.
It dawns on me that this is February the eighteenth, and you're billing us for not only January, but February, March, and April. Is that, are you billing us in advance for prospective work that you're going to do?
No, no, this is not an invoice. This is simply a, this is the change order for the board to approve for work that was done prior to the first of the year, and work that was done after the first of the year.
Well, let's talk about, let's talk about what year.
There's two numbers on the page. Thirty-five thousand dollars, which shows as overrun. That was services provided from roughly June through December of two thousand and fifteen. Then there's twenty-three thousand dollars, which is for services from January through April of two thousand and sixteen. So that work has not been accomplished yet, or some portion of it has not been accomplished yet.
So you're billing us in advance?
This is.
Well, you can say it's not, oh, that's a change order, okay, it's a change order. But so we're going to be approving a change order, and invoice will follow to support the change order after the work is done, is that, is that correct?
Based on actual cost, because it's a not-to-exceed amount, at some point in time, yes, we will submit another invoice. We will submit an invoice for thirty-five thousand dollars as soon as the board approves it. The other twenty-three thousand dollars only as the money gets expended.
I thought the twenty-three, you'd already.
So he's capping the twenty-three? When to go forward? Are we capping the bill, are we capping the twenty-three?
Well, that's what I'm trying to find out. And I can't, I can't quite figure out what's been.
Are we capping the twenty-three?
Yeah, are we going to cap this twenty-three, or are we?
Paul, you're not going to come back to us in March?
Yeah, that's what we don't want to have happen.
If we finish the contract in April, which I would actually have my doubts at this point in time, but if we finish the contract in April, yeah, we wouldn't come back to you. But actually, at this point in time, we're spending very, very little dollars because about the only thing that's left to do is some concrete sidewalk repair, and then the final asphalt paving on the north end of the job.
Okay, so up to twenty-three proportionately, I think that's what Bill wants to ask, proportionately, how much have we already spent?
Maybe a few thousand dollars. I would have to go back and look, but it's probably a few thousand dollars.
So can we talk around figures here between us?
Say five thousand dollars tops.
Okay, so you've spent, we've spent five, or you've given five. You're telling us that between now and April, your forecast is for eighteen, not to exceed, but we're going to need some justification of that when we come to the end of April.
He just told you it's going to be finished by the end of April.
Well, hold on, hold on. Timing-wise, you've got an awful lot of work to do for that eighteen, for what you just stated was, is not a lot of work that's going on. Do you understand?
Yeah, but there's, I don't see that being a lot of work. The only thing really that's left to do primarily is the paving on the north end of Gateway Boulevard.
Does that justify eighteen, Paul?
It did when I put the.
Twenty-three minus five, eighteen, that's right.
When I put the estimate together, yes. I mean, hopefully, that's a high number, because I don't want to come back and talk to you all again. And again, it's a not-to-exceed, so it's, if we don't spend the money, you get it back at the end of the contract.
You won't invoice if it's not.
That's right, if we don't have somebody out there, we're not going to send you an invoice.
Pam?
Why are we paying it then?
Well, okay, what I'm understanding is that it's capping at fifty-eight, right? So we already expect that he's already done around forty thousand dollars worth of work.
Correct.
Okay, so what he's trying to get done now is an approval for the fifty-eight. We're going to get invoiced on around the forty thousand of work that he's already done from June to January. And then from January to April, what is there, eighteen thousand dollars gap? That could possibly be used.
February to April.
February to April.
But he's already said that he's hardly going to do anything other than this concrete work. So where's the eighteen? Why don't we cap it in February at this time, see where it goes, March and April?
Because then you're going to see him again back here in May.
That's all right, I'd love to see Paul, anytime.
But you would want me to, you would want to cap it at, let's say, that five thousand dollars? So you're asking me to go out and spend money that you haven't approved yet, when you just said you don't want me to spend money that you haven't approved?
Paul, the work that's coming up, from what I've heard you say just now, we're talking about the paving at the north end of Gateway Boulevard.
Correct.
But the meeting book doesn't say that. It says that the work is the lighting and landscaping improvements on Gateway Boulevard, not the paving. That's what you're supposed to be inspecting and overseeing. Are you actually inspecting and overseeing the landscaping and lighting?
No, sir.
Because then the meeting book's wrong.
That's what's holding up, the paving work.
But that's not what the, I'm just saying, I don't want, again, to debate with you. I'm talking about what I'm presented with in the meeting book.
So it's hard for us to agree when we don't see the real thing.
Mr. Tinkle has been trying to straighten us out for the last fifteen minutes.
By the way, Pam, I agree with your numbers, thirty-five plus five, I'm with you on this, okay?
I think I just sent through Abbott and Costello, who's on first. I've never seen anything like this. Issue one, it looks like to me there are five distinct issues here. One.
Are we all sitting up here, is that what you're saying?
That's coincidental. The issue is, is that there appears to be, from the board book, like Rod said, five issues. Issue one is the inspection of the irrigation line or services associated with the irrigation line. Second, the sidewalk going up Griffin Drive. Third, kind of confusing, but the lighting and landscaping on Griffin Drive. I'm sorry, Gateway, Gateway Drive. Four, a cost overrun on an originally estimated project. And five, the work remaining to be done under the original contract. Those appear to be the five things to me.
Paul, you agree with that?
Yes.
Okay. You've got in front of you a thirty-five thousand dollar item. Well, first of all, the detail on this drawing, or on this page, page eleven, is only in sport of the twenty-three thousand dollars, which is enumerated January, February, March, and April. The bigger question I think you all need to be answering is where is the detailed breakdown of the thirty-five thousand that was billed, which is significantly greater? What made that up? Because there's only three things that have been done relative to that that we know of. The line has been put in, the sidewalk's been put in, and the only other one it can be, and I agree, I've been in Paul's shoes before, it could be the cost overrun on the work. And if that's the case, I don't have really any problem at all. Just show me the man-hours. In other words, that little total down here at the bottom, point five seven three, point five seven three, and across, that enumeration that justifies what's to be done, I'd like to see that same one for the thirty-five thousand that has been done, and break it into the three categories. Overrun on the original job, which if he was doing the work under a true time and materials with a not-to-exceed estimate, probably when we went over the not-to-exceed, somebody should have come back here and said, hey, guys, we're over the not-to-exceed. My clients have told me, you go out and you spend twenty-five, thirty thousand dollars, lots of luck, you just got educated. You won't do that again, but I don't think we're there.
You've made your point.
My point is, is you need the thirty-five thousand broken down.
Yeah, Paul, are you going to provide us an invoice that totals thirty-five thousand with the details that Ed just said?
We have provided an invoice to Tetra Tech with all the time cards for the backup for the work that was performed up until the end of December.
Does it total thirty-five thousand?
Actually, it totaled fifty-five, but I cut the number down. I thought it was too high.
And you, so the invoice was thirty-five?
Somewhere in that round numbers. I can't tell you exactly, because the accountants handle that, but yes, it's thirty-five thousand dollars.
Okay, I'd like to have a motion to approve this change order.
I'll make a motion to approve the change order. The other thing, but I think we need to understand, what are we going to do for the work going forward? Are we going to?
That includes this, that includes it, this includes it.
So this is going to?
I'll second it with the idea that we will get something to justify the thirty-five thousand dollars.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Other than just a total.
And that will be part of the invoice, once it's actually invoiced, and Danny will go through it, and you will have that.
Can we be provided with, I guess if we approve?
We'll be provided a copy of that invoice, okay?
Right, but if we approve the total change order, can we be, I guess, provided on a weekly or bi-weekly basis of what's happening? How we're being, going to be billed as many?
You should go to Danny.
What about just each invoice, give it value of each of the invoices?
We're in discussion, may I say something? The motion's been seconded, correct?
The motion's been made and tracked, that is correct.
We're in discussion.
That's correct.
I'd like to make some comments when they're finished.
Please do.
I don't feel comfortable agreeing this today. And I'd like to suggest that we direct the district manager and our engineer to come back to us in two weeks with more substantiation as to where that thirty-five thousand dollars came from, and taking Gary and Pam's point, whether we could cap this change order at a certain figure, less than fifty-eight, maybe forty thousand or something. And let's have the district manager recommend to us what we should be approving here.
Will you move that we defer this item for two weeks?
I would, yes.
I'll withdraw my second, I'm happy with that, that's fine.
May I have a second to the motion to withdraw?
You've got it. Sure. You've got it.
Are you, you're not finished with this? We're good, we're going to, we're going to try and put an end to this for today if you don't have to say something.
One more thing.
Danny, Danny said something, and Rod and I have talked about this and we have somewhat of a little difference of opinion, but I can tell you from an engineering perspective, this procedure that we're using of going through Tetra Tech to retain a consultant for basically tasks of which he's doing nothing other than an administrator or a passer-through, whatever you want to call it, and incurring the risk, as a design professional myself, that's bull. That should not be done. If you're going to go through the engineer and subcontract stuff out like Paul has done, if there was an accident on this job, his neck is going to be cut just as fast as Paul's. That's not right. We should be marking it up or we simply should be entering into a separate agreement with the other one, not mixing this up. I hate to see when I'm doing 150, $200,000 contracts as a citizen where the consultant, i.e. Tetra Tech in this case, has basically no input other than processing invoices from Paul to you. Makes no sense.
Your point is, we'll take it. But thank you.
But that's not being done, Bill. That's my point.
Thank you very much. We have motion and a sec.
Can I ask a question? Just in the interim, sorry. In the interim, what are we going to do about inspection? Will the staff be handling that or are we asking Paul to incur costs at his risk?
Yeah, because the work is going to stop at this point if we don't move forward.
That's, I don't, that doesn't have, that doesn't have to happen. Paul trusts us. He's been with us, he's been with us for years.
After tonight, he may not.
Well, Paul may have trusted us already.
Can I comment on that question?
Yeah.
I just, I've just been directed that what we did was not the right way to do it and not to have it happen again, and now you're, you're asking me to do the same thing again. So if that's what you want...
We're only asking you, number one, to provide some more detail on the $35,000 and to keep going, and we'll guarantee you in two weeks, it'll all be settled if you do what we've asked you to do.
Mr. Chairman, maybe an alternative would be to authorize a change order for scope of work to be performed within the next two weeks. Very nearly...
No, 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 no. We're going to get this done in two weeks, if, as soon as Paul provides the detail that Pam and others have, have asked for.
We've, we've changed the ground rules here on them at this point in time. We've also, as Ed was talking about, Danny's put himself out, et cetera. And what's your out of pocket at this point?
About 40,000.
35 plus 5.
I want to hear from Paul.
It's $35,000 through the first of the year and roughly $5,000 since.
Okay. I want to authorize that, I want to authorize that because, first of all, I trust him.
I trust him.
We've had, we've had enough exp...
He's kept the cost $20,000 already?
Ed, will you give me a chance?
They're being right here.
You know? There's, there's a relationship here that's been established, and I think that it's time for us to, A, take some of this on our shoulders as the fact that we didn't and will never again. He has bills to pay. Tony's suggestion of the, the two week type situation takes him to our point of our meeting, and it clarifies all this with the expectations of, first of all, I totally trust the gentleman and I trust Danny and trust Tyler, and certainly Ed's going to be involved as well. We get this moved past as far as the financial is concerned, and after this, we, I think, pretty well established what our next relationship would be.
Well, let me ask this question. She had made the motion to approve this, and I said I would second it with the idea that we would be brought back the detail of the $35,000. Is that not what you're happy about?
And then we had a motion to postpone all of this for two weeks.
We're delaying the approval of the change order, but I support Gary's position that we need to get you paid for the work you've done.
How are you going to, how are you going to pay somebody unless you've got an authorized change order to the contract?
The question of, the question of payment, okay? If there's, if there's only any other way around it than a two-week change order, I would prefer that.
I think this term indicated in the conversation was, in order to authorize payment to the $35,000, we need to have a change order first. And then he would submit the bills, and then we'd have to review the bills to make sure everything's appropriate for payment.
So we're back to the original...
Yeah, we're back to square one.
The issue here is, we have the detail for what they anticipate the work is going to be January through April, but we don't have any kind of a detail for what constitutes the $35,000.
You don't have, you don't have an invoice yet. You're just authorizing a change order for a certain amount of money. Once, as soon as he gets back, he's already sent or Danny's received an invoice, it'll have all the documentation. I will submit that to you, but we'll go ahead and authorize the payment if it's there. And all future invoices will have that, and I'll make sure you get a copy of that.
Or you can...
Danny, how soon can you give us this itemized thing? Danny, Paul?
We, we, we have it, I just need to go through it, but...
Okay. Today being, Thursday, will Cal have it on his, can Cal have it on his desk tomorrow?
Yeah, he can have it tomorrow. I mean, another option would be to approve what you do have the backup for, the $23,000, and it's just a matter of time that they're holding. I know they want to invoice it.
I understand. Give me a chance. Stick with me. Let's say that you've got this on your desk tomorrow and it's shared with Tony. Just bear with me. How long is it going to take you to go through it and go, it's okay?
I'm going to ask April to go through it, but probably Monday.
In the light of expediency, the two of you putting your fantastic heads together, how quickly?
Monday morning.
That's fine. If he's going to get it, he's going to get an invoice that has all the detail on it, but he ain't going to be able to darn, do a darn thing with, until we prove, approve this change order.
So can we go on and authorize a motion to...
Motion to approve this change order with the understanding that before any cash leaves our drawer, the, the detail will be here.
How about agreeing to the change order in two parts and we'll just agree the 23 today?
No. He's already incurred 40.
He hasn't sent us a bill yet?
He's already incurred 40.
That's why I, that's why I was, Bill, that's why I was going for the 35. And 35 fills a block of this number that was given to us. 40 becomes a new...
New number.
But it's a change order, Gary. This is not an invoice.
Bill, I understand. In two years from now, somebody will be looking at this, running for your seat, and will be utilizing this as, as a whole gambit of, we've got the number here of 35,000. It puts Paul in a good position. It gives him the capability, we already have the data for it to support it.
Here's what I'd like to do, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to make a motion that we approve the $23,060, which, which takes care of all of 2016 up to now and going forward, so it allows Paul to carry on his work. And we'll delay the 35,000 until we have a little more detail in two weeks.
We've got, either, we either have to amend the motion on the floor or vote on it first.
What motion's on the floor?
The motion on, and the second on the floor to approve this change order as we're looking at it.
Okay. I'd like to suggest we amend it.
With the, with the invoices, with, with supporting documentation...
Before the cash leaves the door, but this is, this is to approve the change order. I have a motion and I have a second.
That's correct.
Are you okay with the 23 at this point?
That doesn't do anything for yesterday, so I'm not sure if I'm okay with that.